Yeah, it's like real far down. If you have to, you might have to adjust the sound down if you get feedback. And I'll work on the...
How do you do that?
I would just...
Oh, I'm not, okay, got it, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
What I'll do is... I'll move these two.
So, if you have a guest and they're speaking, do they have a microphone that they can talk into as well?
These are very, very...
Okay, alright, okay, I didn't see in the video.
Somebody could be sitting right there and you pick up from whispering.
Okay, well, I think I heard pretty well when it was Joshua from...
Oh.
Elmer's, you know? I think, as I recall it, it translated pretty well, so... I just remember looking at the video thinking, "I don't think there's any microphones out there." There he is.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Once what? Once you're clear. Cause they're, they're in the kitchen right now.
So, it's in the refrigerator in the kitchen?
Yeah, you just go into this little room next to the kitchen end and there's a fridge.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so I guess... So, who is that, John Walter, he's gonna be late?
So, Todd is not here.
Oh. So, Behrens will carry the meeting?
Uh, well, Casey's in chair.
Oh.
Okay, maybe not. It's, from what I understand, there's, if it's too close to these external speakers, that's how we're getting feedback? So, give this a shot.
Honestly, I don't think I've ever heard any feedback.
And it is paused, right? But it's not beeping for some reason?
Yeah, it's paused.
Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Behrens?
Present.
Mr. Christensen?
Present.
Mr. Frerick?
Yes.
And Ms. Lopner?
Present.
Uh, Noonan? Mr. Noonan is absent. Mr. Popa is absent. Mr. Robbins?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
And Mr. Yeoman?
Absent prior notice.
Public comment? Doesn't look like we'll have any, there's no additional thing I need to know there in terms of, okay. We have an agenda here, I'm looking over. Anybody need additions? Or changes to this agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we have an agenda. Approval of minutes from the regular session in June and from an executive committee session in June.
Support.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of approving those minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Scott, do you wanna review anything for us with financials?
Yeah. Um, we're fifty-six, seven percent over our budget. Nothing really crazy standing out or anything.
Are we getting feedback on the debris cleanup, like say from the disc golf people or anything like that?
Yeah, they love it. Everything's been positive, all thrilled. Yeah, a lot of great feedback, so...
Thanks for all the work you did getting that set up, Scott, and mother henning it through. And I know they had to do some switching around with equipment and whatnot, and I appreciate your leadership on that.
Amen to that.
Thank you.
And Scott, just, you probably got the notice, we're meeting next Friday there?
Right.
Okay.
That's Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, okay.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. It's a lot like Friday.
It's a lot like Friday.
Only it's kinda in the middle.
Yeah.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah, gotcha.
Are these financials an accurate reflection of what we've done so far, or is there stuff that we've paid for that hasn't been processed on this report?
Uh, there's nothing huge outstanding, there might be a few small items.
Okay, so it's not, so the money that we have on here is available, and we have to spend it before the end of the year or we lose it.
Well, you have an RFP that, did they award that last night formally?
Yeah.
Yes, so that's twenty-three-five?
Yeah, ish.
Yeah.
How much?
About twenty-three-five.
And then there's the culvert.
Yep.
So, it'll be twenty-eight-five, so we're gonna be over thirty thousand easy, still it's gonna come out of the budget.
Anything else specifically on financials?
Move to accept financials as presented?
Second.
All in favor of financials?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Laurel, can you fill me in on number three?
Uh, well, actually Melinda probably could, because she asked that we defer to this committee for further review. I had sent out an email with some links earlier.
Yes, I see.
So, what we've got is a little situation, well, maybe a little bit of past history. At one point, Parks and Rec was just a little committee and we took our own minutes and it wasn't a real big deal. And then we became a commission and worked with Council of Governments for Rouse and grant writing, got another park, got a bigger commission. Used to meet off-site, and we didn't have anyone to take our minutes, so somebody on Parks and Rec always took our own minutes. And unfortunately, I don't even know that we've got good minute retention. I don't know if we even have, like, where those minutes are. I don't know if clerk has them or what anymore. It was just pretty, pretty messy there for a while, cause we met off-site, we just weren't done professionally. So, we moved back here, but when we moved back here, the clerk was overworked and understaffed and didn't pick up taking our minutes for us. So, we struggled there for a while, and then not only with minutes, but with procedure, because everything was, is all set to the commissioners' schedule. What, some stuff has to go before, it has to be approved by us, and then go to the full commission for approval before it can be spent, and the whole process. Some of all that gets lost, and what has to go to the commissioners, what can we spend on our own, how to trip our budgets, et cetera. So, what's lacking for us is administrative assistance. So, in the last, what's it been, like, year, thank God Laurel's kinda said, "Okay, you guys need some help." And Laurel's stepped in, she's been our assistant, but she's doing it on county board commissioners' time. You know, right now, I guess Chet's answering the phone, cause Laurel's not answering her phone right now. Laurel's not bringing scheduling and everything else Laurel does for us, so, and assisting Chet. So, therein became the question, and my thought as a board was that, and it came up in, by the commissioners, is that maybe we are going to have to try to pay for this position. And right now, we're paying for minutes, to get professional minutes. So, we got a couple of things going on here. One is that there's kind of a proposal, and we should think about it here, is that if we moved our Parks and Recreation meetings to like, say, five o'clock in the evening, and then our new assistant would get some kind of stipend to stay after, be our administrative assistant, keep us on track, make sure we follow policy, make sure we're within our budget, and, I don't know, they would take minutes or we'd still have someone taking minutes, I'm not sure how that would work exactly. That's, that's been some of the discussion, but there's been some other discussions, too. If the county board commissioners splits finance and HR away from, underneath the clerk right now, and the clerk, we have just given the clerk one more position in the budget. Right now, it's in the budget, if we don't pull it out, the clerk is gonna have one more person to help with minutes. So, it's quite likely now that one of the clerking staff could be able to take our minutes if we're within the workday. So, that, that's what we should talk about. We wanna leave our three o'clock meeting time and ask the county clerk to, cause I believe the minister said that by statute, the clerk is responsible for taking our minutes. So, maybe if we're in this meeting, in this building this hour, the clerk can do our minutes. We still probably would need some administrative assistance, and hopefully, maybe have someone who would continue to do that for us. The other issue we've got is we're having way too many committee meetings. So, my suggestion is we go back to the committee of the whole and just have, do everything as a full committee now, from here on out, or after the first of the year, whatever it takes, and work as a full committee, and then if we have to have special meetings, we would have a special parks meeting, but it would be done just like any other special parks meeting. But there's, we're getting a lot of pushback on the number of parks meetings that we're having.
From?
Uh, the other commissioners.
Because it's costly?
Uh, it's, yeah, it's costly, it's putting a lot of time away from others, it's a lot more minutes. It's, it's a lot of meetings for a budget the size of ours. And I don't think we've gotten enough in our budget, actually, the couple of committee meetings we've been having. So, that, that's probably the nutshell.
In the entire time that I've arranged to have someone take your minutes, after the, got to the point where I couldn't get anyone and I was taking them, I never accounted for my time to this board, so you've been getting free minutes for probably at least three years.
Sounds like we should continue. So, your thoughts, Lauren, or Laurel, it's, it's not good for you?
I really don't have a choice in coming up with some, I don't really have an opinion either way. If you want me to keep assisting you, that, that's entirely up to you. I, I am just an employee for the county, and I do where I'm tasked.
Let me ask, Melinda, committee of the whole, would that be separate from the, our commission meetings, two separate things, or, I don't quite understand?
Well, it could be done that way, but there would be then two meetings a month, and so that's double, you know, basically.
Or...
We used to just meet one, once a month as a full committee and did everything that way.
Yeah, just have a longer meeting in other words.
Yeah, yeah.
Just say...
And when you say we used to, was that with all three parks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I like the idea of all three parks combining and working together as a unit and collaborating together instead of all these little three separate ones. And it seems like we're, we're not fighting each other, we're competing a little for the monies that are there instead of...
Oh, a lot of repetition.
Coming together, a lot of repetition, instead of coming together and saying, "Well, what's the most part for the whole park system, what can we do together?"
Let me speak to that, and Melinda and Steve can speak to it as well. That's how it was when I started, well, five years ago. There were no individual committees per park, we were committee of the whole. I heard the comments, well, John, you were there, too?
Nothing was getting done.
Nothing was getting done.
It's terrible.
And we have achieved more in each park, once we went to these individual committees. That has seemed far more productive in terms of work accomplishment in the parks. I hadn't thought about the extra cost in terms of time, et cetera.
But I have a philosophy, that the meeting is where you come together and you discuss what all the work you've done in between previous meetings. Somehow, we have to get around the idea that we can't go and do some work in between meetings without having to sit down and take minutes, and maybe we can't. But it seems like there's some way that we could have, quote the Miles Kimberly committee, or a group of people that are interested in that and focus on that and do the groundwork to present at the regular meeting monthly, and don't call it a committee, just do it, call it something and present it at the meetings. Do the groundwork so that we have stuff to present that's reasonable.
Okay, that's a technical point. So, if we're not called, if we have a committee as a whole, we don't formally have our structure of three separate committees going through each park, and our quorum is six, can four people get together at a park and four of us?
I would probably, you're kinda getting into a gray area, and I would probably defer to Michelle on any kind of quorum questions with regards to the Open Meetings Act. I don't think it would be too unreasonable, though, that if you are a commission of ten, and everyone gets a somewhat of a homework assignment before the next monthly session, that you're working on a park that you might have been tasked to. But again, I would defer to Michelle on any OMA questions.
Could that be called a work session? Are there such, is there such a thing?
That would still fall under the open meeting act.
Open meeting day?
For anything that would, would be, anything, anything, two or more of us that met and spoke towards deliberation or came up with a recommendation. That's what has happened.
So, work sessions are included?
But, the question is, yes, but there again, the question is, now, could one person that's in, you know, the spokesperson for each park, take a look at that park and bring ideas back to this full board? Say just work with Scott, or take a tour of their park once a month, and Scott could show them, you know, this bridge really needs some assistance, and then our representative for that park could bring back their knowledge on it and present it to us with Scott, something like that could probably be done.
And if you look at this document that's under review later for Miles Kimberly, that's exactly what was done. John met with Scott and...
The three of us.
Yeah.
We didn't violate anything?
No, you were, as long as you're not trying to work towards a decision, that's the biggest thing.
Just getting, getting the information or knowledge, I think is allowed, yeah.
Steve?
Uh, here's an idea, and I know that when we went to the committee format, it had some real strengths, not the, the main one was that recommendations came back to the commission for action, and then it was discussed, and then on it went. So, there was the ability to get some things done, which historically was a difficult thing for this group, so that was a good thing. Now, if, if, maybe the committee meetings could be limited. It just, maybe all the way back to whatever number fits our system, maybe having so many committee meetings is detrimental to the budget and the ability for this building to do the minute-taking and whatnot, so I can see that. Maybe that's a way to go, I don't know, just kinda brainstorming.
What, what is the dollar amount we're looking at in terms of differentiation? Okay, we have X number of people for this board, okay, say for Miles Kimberly, four, Old Settlers and Veronica. Have you defined the difference in costs so that we can look at that and know what the difference is, instead of just speaking of dollars?
I may be able to help with that. Alright, so for, in our budget, in twenty eighteen, we budgeted nineteen hundred dollars for per diem. And spent sixteen. We only spent fourteen hundred in twenty-twenty with per diem. Year to date, we're at seven hundred basically in per diem, but we're, we budgeted twenty-eight hundred. The projection, the trajectory was, we would spend twenty-eight hundred, so that, it was up by a third doing it this way. We're spending basically, expected spending about a thousand dollars more a year.
Five thousand more a year?
One, one thousand more a year.
One thousand more a year?
Yeah, so it doesn't, it doesn't look like a lot on, on paper, but...
So, when we, when we look at this, okay, and I, I have just gotten here, really, I'm just the newbie and don't know anything, but if I were to look at a, at a budget and say, "Well, we could save a thousand dollars and, and have less money going out," but from what I'm hearing, it's also less productive, and so why would we wanna sacrifice production for a thousand dollars, or even two thousand, or three thousand? Those are small amounts of money for giving up, like, the gain that we, that I'm hearing has been achieved, so, just from a newbie, just a thought.
I did explain that to the board, it's been, it's been both good and bad. It, it did what it expected to do by, by splitting off and having, you know, concentration on this park, and if you had that concentration on this park, concentration on this park, and concentration, so, I didn't need to know, I, I'm old settlers, I didn't really need to know all the details about Veronica Valley, because that wasn't my park, so, you know, so we also could concentrate on that. And we were getting, we got a lot done there, we got a lot done at Miles Kimberly, and frankly, we got our brush shack done at Old Settlers. So, we have accomplished a lot, especially in like I said, the last three years, it, it did its purpose, we're absolutely right. It just created, maybe it just exacerbated the, the issue that we don't have the, you know, formal administrative assistance and minutes taking. It just, it brought it all to the forefront of, and put us in the spotlight of all the commissioners that...
Well, here's, here's a...
That's been challenging, honestly, it's been, maybe it's been a bit of time, but we've seen it before. Sometimes it's hard to get anything past the commission to put money in our budget. Like, right today, we looked at, think we're gonna kinda look at that more, but they want us to prioritize our capital outlay. They wanna know what we're going to spend it on, and sometimes it's their close votes even to get our budget.
Yeah, another question that goes with the circle is, I'd like to know from Scott. Has it made it easier on you with multiple committees and people helping you out in a bigger way, or is it more confusing and more difficult for you?
I think it's helped the parks a lot.
Okay, that's, that tells me a lot.
You know, it, for me, it's a lot more meetings, but it's helping the parks, so...
Frequent meetings move things along. If we don't have these meetings, we can't proceed, cause you have to get approved, you have to get, you have to put our P out, you have to do this, you have to do that, and nothing gets done, and the year goes by so fast. And I say, you know, "What am I doing here?" Nothing gets done, that's my, that's the way I look at it anyway. And the only way things do get moved along is if we do have these meetings. Miles Kimberly has a meeting next Friday, okay, right after, we have one a week ago, and I don't think it's inappropriate, but I appreciate that, cause it's costly maybe, but, you know, I don't think anything gets done unless we have a meeting.
Another suggestion, my idea is that we try not to have more than one committee meeting a month for, for our parks. You know, and have your committee meetings before our regular board meeting, and then take care of it at the regular board meeting, that's, that's a thought.
Well, the committee meetings don't have to meet all the time, if there's nothing going on, like we talked with Dave and John and I, if there's nothing going on, we don't have to meet. But sometimes you gotta meet a couple of times a month, like, soon as the fish start coming, or we got a bid going out, but there's sometimes in the winter.
Well, and...
We don't need to have meetings.
Keep in mind this, this technical point, that with our three separate committees, we have the tool to make things move along. That is, the individual committee can make a recommendation to this body, and at that point, it has to be dealt with, which has seemed to move us along compared to my experience that first year and a half or so. Yeah, Rick?
What I noticed today during budget from our fellow commissioners, you know, they were looking at your wish list, and that's what it looked like, you know, one park wants to do this, one park wants to do this, you got this, and it's like, what we really need is a five-year plan, and we need some structure, so this wish list going to the board, and, cause some of the stuff, you know, we want the walking trail, four hundred thousand. I don't know where we're gonna get that, I mean, Melinda to the goal chip, the other five commissioners, they're not gonna, we're already taking heat for what budget we have.
If we get fifty percent of that in grants, would the, would the commissioners want the other fifty?
They may, but it's like, we gotta have a plan here, and we talked about it.
I agree, I think all the...
I mean, we're just kinda like, you know, it's like flavor of the day, you know, let's do this, and then no one ever follows up on it.
Well, the other thing is...
Well, the walking path is in the five-year budget.
What's that?
The walking path is in the five-year plan.
Yeah.
But that plan's two years old now, right?
No, we just passed it.
No, we just passed it this past year.
It was twenty-four months, or twelve months, or...
No.
But I mean, you know, we were talking about Dog Park, and it's like, maybe what we really need to do is, like, if Miles sits down, and think we're gonna do that, is, you know, is there a need for the golf thing anymore? Maybe that's where the Dog Park goes, I mean, there's some things that I think we're doing that we need Scott's input, and we talked about it with you, Scott, is no one's using that, you know, if we only had three or four people using that golf, whatever, golf range or whatever, why do we have...
The driving range.
I mean, before, before we decide, I mean, we gotta know where we're gonna put that, one mile, a little there.
That's why we're meeting in a week.
Yeah.
Well, Rick, I, if I may, I appreciate what you're saying. When I first joined, there was emphasis, and it still is with each set of new members, on the rules of Open Meeting Acts, and that's all well and good. But frankly, I don't think I knew of a CIP until within just the past months. I didn't, I'm only now coming to understand its importance, and we really haven't, we haven't done the kinds of prioritization that, that I know the full commission wants. Some of that is, um, well, I, I just sense that members of this commission need some training on, I guess, budget more than open meetings, and some other things. I'm not sure where setting priorities falls with whether or not we have individual committees or committee of the whole. I know that when we moved from committee of the whole to our individual parks committee, things began moving along more steadily. Laurel, you sent us two emails. I could only find a link with one of them, but I was judging from what you wrote, really what I read covered, covered both. And my understanding is they were recommendations or, not so much, they were thoughts, planning thoughts from Chet. I thought addressed to the full commission, the full county commission, about... I thought addressed to the full commission, the full county commission about, well, shifting your position, your assignments. Is that part of what Melinda's talking about or is this...
Well, I wanted to give you all the information from both the Board of Commissioners' meetings perspective, so to speak, and what you worked towards your executive committee session where you came up with a budget plan for 2022. So that's why I gave you the timeline and I ran it out. It was on Monday, August 16th that I sent to everyone. And it listed at first, the executive committee reviewed the request from member Popa to hire an administrative assistant and that included the minutes and then a little snapshot of what John had suggested. And then the request was subsequently recommended for submission to the Board of Commissioners. They held two committee of the whole sessions and independently from Parks' recommendation, Chet had come up with a potential request that involved Parks and Rec getting an administrative assistant, which he had proposed would be giving me formal additional duties. And then the board deferred the action on this item, which was then again added to the agenda on the August 12th budget work session meeting. They don't have the minutes ready for that, but I gave an approximate timestamp so you could hear Commissioner Lautner's comments on the thoughts, so...
And that's the part I didn't get. So this is what you've reviewed for us right now?
This is what I want us to, yeah, this is what I want us to talk, to talk about. Maybe there's a question and frankly, if Laurel is going to be our assistant, which I understand I hope she will continue to do, do we meet after five? Or do we continue to meet during the work day? And is that something Laurel's even just been taking on for us? If it's not Laurel, I don't know who else, because if you've got to understand the whole dynamic policy, all the policies and the dynamic structure we have to work through just to get something through, it's gotta be understood.
Personally, I, I like having you here, which I've spoken to you about. And I think you help keep us organizing on track. And if, if there's a way to maintain the three o'clock, I prefer daytime for me than meetings. In fact, the earlier the better, three o'clock's even late. So, so I would prefer to have you at the meetings and guiding us along. I find it very helpful.
Well, when it comes to actually setting a new start time, it'd probably be helpful to talk to both Casey and Todd as well because Casey's got young kids. I know he does struggle at times to get here before 3:30 and that might be the case for others. So it might not be a bad idea to consider potentially even 3:30.
Can I go back to the, the structure for a second? As I think like we have these three different parks and we all have visions of what we'd like to see and we have wish lists and we've never come together as a group inherent, had them in the table and rank order or anything. That's something we should do. But what's more important, so I would really like the Board of Governors to tell us what their vision of the parks, what the, what the vision of our system is for us. Because we have some ideas, there's a five-year plan, we think, it seems like we're getting roadblocks all the time financially. Maybe it's for good reason, maybe it's not. But I'd really like to know personally, and I think the whole group would, what is, what do the Board of Commissioners really vision the park system to be? What do they want to see? Right now, part of Miles Kimberly is a little dilapidated as far as I'm concerned. And it needs some buffing up, it needs some new stuff. And we're not asking for a Ferris wheel out there, we're asking for a good park system, something to be proud of. Something around the similar lake, you see what they have in the Garfield Towne Beach area that's really nice. I've been to Miles Kimberly and I said, this looks dated, this looks grabby, this isn't kept up. We're gonna get rid of the grub shack, that's gonna help, but you know, it still needs more, and it needs more attention. It should be a gem of the county, in my opinion. But I don't know if the Board of Commissioners as a group feel that way.
Well, as, as part of that, I think taking paint and sprucing it up and I just, one thing that I've run into is the lack of the ability for people that are involved with this, they can't go out there, a group of us, and start painting and help out. I mean, that's crazy. I mean, we, we just want to buff things up and make them look nice, help Scott out and, and he can't, he's just one guy. And why not have a group of people like all of us because we want to be involved in the Parks and Rec Committee? We don't just want to go to meetings, we want to get things done. And so part of that somehow or another, it just seems like we could work it out so we could go as a group and go to Miles Kimberly and grab a paintbrush and Scott could be there too and help out, you know? Just, it seems to slow things down and there just seems like there'd be a way around that. Because I was excited to get things done and, you know, get involved with this and I, I still am. And I just think that there needs to be a way so we can spruce that up, paint it. Just painting those outbuildings will really liven the place up with the green and the white. It needs painting, big time.
Steve?
Just kind of paint kind of a history real quick. When we first became a Parks and Rec Commission, there was a reach, an outreach to the public to do the first five-year plan and got a prioritized system in place for what the public was thinking about parks in the county. So that gave us kind of a format. So we worked with that with regard to each park as to what the public helped prioritize. And we got our first five-year plan and then each five-year plan has carried those ideas through. So we really are working from a base that came from the public and the public continues to tell us what they might want at each park. One of the big pushes when we very first came on board was to have a park plan for each park. We had a sketch that I did that we went in and got Veronica Valley with. And they let, that was, might be the last one they let fly that way. Everything since has come with a professional plan. So we looked at the idea of getting a plan for each park. And in that, we hired professionals to come or were lucky enough, in the case of Old Settlers, to get a professional volunteer that would put a professional plan together. So now we have a professional plan for Old Settlers, for Miles Kimberly and for Veronica Valley. And the one for Veronica Valley is most recently updated with our attempts to go for grant monies to get help with doing the things at that park that were actually listed when we bought the park. So those, that passive recreation park, those things are listed. And things that made it to the plan are the things that were listed that we said we were gonna do when we bought the park. So each of those plans is in place and each committee works with the plans and looks at the plans and tries to figure out which thing in the plan should we do first now. So it may look like kind of a randomized pick by each committee or by the Parks and Rec Commission of what we're gonna do next. But it actually is according to plan and something we've been looking at over the long haul. So I'm feeling really good about having a bona fide plan for each park and having committees work on, from that plan and from the five-year plan to really work on things that have been in the works for a long time for each park. We have not gotten individual specific things updated on a yearly basis to the CIP. County Board of Commissioners is moving more towards CIP action, I think. If it's in the CIP, then, you know, that lets the commissioners know it's there and that's kind of the bible that they're working from right now. So we need as a Parks and Rec Commission to get our items that our committees want to work on into the CIP so that it doesn't appear like Rick said, I mean, it seems like a surprise. For us on the Parks and Rec Commission and committees, been here working on it. It's not a surprise, it's something we're working toward. But the county commissioners don't see it that way and that's important that we let them know through the CIP that this is where we're heading. And the whole structure thing, I think, is a detail that we just need to work on. And honestly, the commissioners are working on it, Chet's working on it. I feel on the commission side, Parks and Rec, I think we can work with county commissioners and Chet and get this thing figured out. I would be very, very reluctant to lose the committee structure. It's, it's allowed us to move forward. As a Parks and Rec Commission and there are 10 people here and there's three parks and there's six things we are talking about at once, talk about a long win, meeting. Linda, tell us, I mean, we had some long meetings and we discussed many things in the meeting and we come out of the meeting and what did we do? I mean, it, it was very difficult to hone in and I think, I don't know, I think we should be real careful if we're thinking about releasing that committee structure. And I, 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 those are just thoughts.
John?
Now, when I asked for this, this assistant, it was to yes, still keep these committees, but we got to have a person that's gonna meet with each one of us all the time. So I'm gonna use Veronica Valley as an example. So that this worker, and it's not gonna be a worker that, I don't know, is, I didn't envision it under, under this big golden globe here. I envisioned it as a part-time person that is gonna administratively get some of the stuff through so that, let's just say again, Veronica Valley is doing something. Okay, now we gotta take it, we gotta draft up the contract, we gotta do this, we gotta get a hold of the tribe. We gotta look and call this guy that's gotta spray this stuff and we gotta do this and we gotta do that. And that's fine, now this assistant, I can take care of some of the work, John can take care of some of the work. But when assistant then comes back to the committee as a whole and say, okay, with regards to Veronica Valley, here's their updated list, here's their new CIP and stuff, okay? And then the other committees meet. And if we need that CIP for each one of these, this assistant is gonna do it. Sometimes we come to these big committees as a whole like we are now and nothing gets done. And I've only been on these things for about eight years or something. But if you had this assistant that's meeting each one of them, that person could report real quick, similar to how Chet reports to the board. So here's what's going on here, we gotta put this in the capital budget. I met with the Miles Kimberly people and this grub shack is in terrible shape. I think we should go out for bids and do this and do that and get it done next year. And this person has to be a worker with each one of these committees. So when we have a committee meeting, Parks and Rec Committee or whatever, but the thing is brief, it's done. You've got a report and you've got one from each department and then you go away. And sometimes you have to have these committees, subcommittees, meet more frequently. And sometimes you don't have to meet it at all if there's nothing going on. But that's where the assistance is needed. Nothing's moving and nobody's keeping track. I've had this maintenance list now for two years for all the parks. I sat with Scott and developed a lot of it and there's still stuff on there on the wish list and nothing's getting done. You know, I'll use some minor things, there is some stuff getting done, but not a lot of the little stuff. That's why I asked for some type of an assistant.
Rick?
No, I think as a group, we come up with great ideas. I mean, we talk about assistant, I mean, what do we want of assistant? I mean, we talk about grants, who writes the grants? And we talk about them, but who at the end of the day, is that something that, you know, you know, if we hire assistants, is that what they're gonna do?
Assistant can, yes.
I mean, they're gonna go out and find these grants? I mean, you know, we got great ideas, I just feel like we're missing a link here of leadership taken to the board to make it happen.
I must say that my experience with going for the state grants the two years we did, I was absolutely surprised that the county didn't have a position that took care of grant applications for every single aspect of the county.
Grants are all there.
I mean, I'm used to coming...
As opposed to leaving me, a rookie and a nonofficial, really trying to drive it. Now, you asked the question, who did, in this case, who did those two grants? It was really Laurel.
See, when I was on the Parks and Rec at Grantshivers, you know, we had Tim Schreiner. I mean, that was his job. I mean, he ran the whole park, so I mean, it was a full-time job. And he went out and kicked butt and got a $12 million grant to get Maple Bay and did it overnight. And that's what I don't see that's happening here. We have great ideas, we just don't have that person to take it to the next level.
That's correct, if any...
I mean, we had budget today and Melinda came out, I mean, Melinda did our talking, but I don't know, I feel like one of you people should have been here for a budget. But we had nobody at the table, so it's hard to tell the other five commissioners what we wanted.
I want to know first from both of you commissioners, is the basic complaint that this commission is costing too much money?
I haven't heard that.
I haven't either.
I think the basic idea is we're not gonna get any more out of them, so...
No, shoot, none of you guys.
Well, it's...
I mean, we can go to that and, yeah, you know, it's...
So here's, here's the deal, all right? So you take a look at parks overall, just, it's been only a very few short years. We have, Scott's our assistant, he didn't, we didn't used to have anybody dedicated to our parks. We had to fight for that and when Scott came on board and found all that love to mow and we pushed for that and that's when Scott started getting in our budget. We didn't have that. So now they're suggesting, I can guarantee you, it's not, it's not an employee. We're not gonna get an employee, they're not gonna give us an employee for us. We can get an assistant to help us administratively, that's, that's what we need to ask for. Can, can we ask the board to compensate Laurel to be, and we're saying Laurel, if Laurel's willing to do it, will the board compensate this position to help us administratively? And if this board can begin to dot all our i's and cross all our t's properly and, and hold committee meetings down to a minimum of possibilities, come to the board, be on track, look a little bit more professional, then I think that's going to go a long ways. We're going to have to continue to write our own grants like everybody else does in the county. We don't have a grant writer in the county. So, and I think that we prioritize, we do have, as Rick said, we have a big wish list and the board's like, well, what do you want to do with that? I would like to us to prioritize it because I think I'd like us to recognize, and I'm gonna just back up, I'm chairman of Old Settlers Park, well, we haven't met because I recognize the fact that we just put a whole lot of money into Old Settlers a couple of years ago with the grub shack. So I kind of took a step back and said, okay, that was our turn, we gotta rein in grub shack, I'm happy there. And we've now spent some money at Veronica Valley and we've now spent some money at Miles Kimberly, which I want to talk about. And so now I'm thinking, well, for 2022, I, I want to get back to Old Settlers. And so in 2022, you know, we can hold some committee meetings, but I'd like to look at new playground equipment and safety barriers there. Because right now, there's no safety barriers. Cars pull up and point right at that kid swing set and sandbox where the kids play and there's nothing to stop that car from going right onto it, nothing. So I think that's a really important thing. We, we have a plan for that, it's in our, this few years back before grub shack, we spent some money on, on donated help in kind to do a plant. We now have a plan for Old Settlers. So I think that's the other thing we should recognize is, okay, for 2022, which park are we going to concentrate on? Or which two, depending on our capital outlay? You know, we've got 20 in here for playground equipment and I think it's going to take at least 30 or 35 for playground equipment in Old Settlers. And it's not gonna leave a whole lot left with only $45,000 in budget for capital outlay. At the same time, I know Miles Kimberly, we want to move forth with, is the dog park probably the next most important item if we get that building removed and, you know, or is it pickup auto parts? We should pick one, but we need to pick whatever's gonna fit with our capital outlay, concentrate on that. And I think that's going to eliminate the need for a whole lot of committee meetings. We shouldn't be meeting as a committee to do, to look at... We shouldn't be meeting as a committee to do, to look at the little maintenance things, because that's, that's Scott's, you know, that's Scott's job, and we shouldn't be really going over, I guess, I never thought about going to my park and, you know, running my white glove across the benches and make sure the dust in, and tell Scott to come dust up. I mean, he knows, he takes good care of our parks, so-
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, so, I mean, that, that's my thought, I just think that we, we can't throw too much out here.
I'm still lost.
Melissa, if it's needed, if it's needed, and we haven't done some of this stuff, we've got to tell the commissioners that it's needed. That grub, that shack that's at Miles Kimmerly is rotten, and we should fix it. At the same time, we should get that playground equipment over there, we just have to tell the board, this stuff has been sitting there, rotten away, Scott's told us that. At the same time, we need to fix that entrance to Veronica Valley. And we just can't wait five, six years to do all this stuff and pick things one park at a time.
The grub shack is taken care of.
It is. What?
The grub shack at Miles is taken care of.
And so is the entrance to the parking lot.
We're writing up, Tim Newman didn't want to come in and write up his own proposals, so Chet's writing up a proposal, or Laurel.
It's a council right now.
Yeah, and he's going to move that, it's going to be taken care of by fall.
In this year's budget?
There is no budget going, I got it sorted straight, it's not costing us anything.
To build a shack?
No, tear it down.
Okay, it's got to get built, another one's got to get built.
Yeah, that's, that saving us $5,000, $6,000 right there. He's going to move it.
Well, we have to sell it to him for a dollar.
Yeah, for a dollar.
I want to go to Steve.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking that it's really, really important, at this point in our juncture as a commission, that Chair and Vice Chair sit down with Melinda and Rick and, and get a, an idea where we can move forward as a commission. I think what Melinda just spoke was kind of the truth coming from the commission, the county commissioners. And I think it makes a lot of sense for us as a commission to prioritize where we're going and what we're going to do, rather than having each committee basically doing that individually. Because then it comes to the Parks and Rec Commission, and we have three committees that have made their priorities, and they're making recommendations. And so we have three groups that have made three priorities, and then, see, Rick, and that would, I think that would be more organized for us.
And maybe this administrative assistant can chair these meetings.
Well, I think, if I'm getting what Melinda's saying properly, and I think I'm hearing it correctly, is that, that we need to be more organized with what we're doing as a commission. Our committees are functioning, but we're not prioritizing it down and filtering it down for the commission, the commission goes to the full Board of Commissioners. So it's, it's looking too chaotic to the Board of Commissioners. So we need to filter it somehow, and I think if our commissioners, the County Board of Commissioners, Rick and Melinda, meet with the Chair and the Vice Chair-
Why Vice Chair and Vice Chair, why not the three committee chairs?
I don't know, I'm just brainstorming. We need to do something, in my estimation, at this point in time.
So, yeah, I, I, well said, and if I may, so I think that we should just get a consensus here. So if, if they're recognizing the fact that we need some administrative assistant, would we like to ask the board to help us with administrative assistance?
What Chet said in this letter here, that you sent out, is that, is that involved what you're talking about, being that person?
Yes. I was trying to be as neutral as possible.
So does this fit, does this, is, is Chet's recommendation versus John Hope, is that the same thing, different thing?
They're different.
It's a little bit different.
It's a little different.
What, Laurel, what do you think we should do?
Um, that is the first part of-
I am willing to work with this board as much or as little as possible, whatever you need me for. I will, quite frankly, now that the bulk of the COVID stuff is over, and this really freed me up a lot, because that was horrendous with all the reporting and stuff. Plus, we were doing the CARES Act, and that grant took up a lot of my time last year. And that was a six-figure grant that we just got. And I have to keep, I have to be mindful of the fact that I might have more duties with the upcoming ARP stuff. But with that being said, Chet had asked me about this before the meeting, and wondered what my thoughts were, would I be willing to do it? And after discussing it with him, what works to my advantage in helping you is that I work as a liaison with the board on Chet's behalf, so I can help you with any executive document summaries, plus I currently am the one who takes care of the requests for proposals or requests for quotes, I work with council. If there's anything that seems like it needs a little oversight from the administrator, I let him know, and then he contacts the appropriate person. And I have that wealth of experience with the foundation of having worked in the clerk's office, so I have a very good understanding, for the most part, of how government should run.
But you've already done that for us, a lot of that, right?
I have, but I-
How should we improve what we're doing?
The thing is, I wasn't giving you a ton of oversight, because I was depending on you to read your minutes, and when it said, I will follow up on this, I figured you would read it and follow up on whatever task you said you were going to follow up on. So I'm assuming if you have an administrative assistant, they will keep you more on task.
Keep the burner going.
And second, second half of that is, is, well, we do have a minute taker now, but, and I'm looking for the budget, and I don't know how we're paying the minute taker.
Oh, great.
Sorry, you are being paid, we just don't know what part of money is coming out of.
Well, you have to look at your financials here.
So is it coming out of Parks and Recreation?
Yes.
What's it coming out of?
Board of Commissioners.
When you look at the transaction history, it looks like-
Is that the temporary office assistant?
Yes.
Okay, I was looking for, so we have temp, so why, so I guess that would be my question, why is that coming out of our budget?
Because he is tasked specifically to this body.
See, if, if statutory minutes are, are the obligation of the county clerk, then why, why don't we get, if we give this new position to the county clerk starting first of the year to help with minutes, we, we shouldn't have to have-
I would have to defer to Michelle on how she is responsible for minutes for the various entities. Parks and Rec is a little different from a, a split off of the Board of Commissioners committees. Just as planning has a planning commission-
Yeah.
Trudy does those minutes.
Okay.
And I would think that would be a similar thing.
So that could change things, if, if giving her a new position to help with minutes doesn't give us a minute taker then?
I don't think it will, because they're, they're really struggling with the amount of, especially at budget time, to do all the meetings for the board.
Right.
So, Melinda-
But let's back up then, so-
I, I think, yeah, we, we need someone like Laurel in her position to assist, I, I would definitely agree with that.
Melinda, can you pose a, a motion here?
Do we need a motion, or what is it?
Of, of, I mean, any motion is to recommend what we want, or think the Board of Commission should approve for us.
I think we already put it in.
Yeah, I, I think that our motion should definitely be, we, we recommend, we recommend to the Board of Commissioners to, to-
Help us.
Yes, that they appoint an administrative assistant to guide Parks and Recreation Commission.
Support.
But, yeah.
Well, my question is, that is what the Board of Commissioners is looking for from us, is some sort of recommendation of, no, we don't want this, or yes, we do?
Yeah, we are just asking for, it's basically what Laurel said, so for, I, I believe, and let me clarify it further, and my, and my, my intention is that we, by asking this position, which just happens to be Laurel at this time, to be our administrative assistant, she now then would get a stipend to help us as our administrative assistant, on top of her regular secretarial duties. Is that your understanding, Laurel?
Well, I'm a little more than a secretary, but that's okay.
Secretary, in my opinion, is the highest there can be, because you do all the work. So you're, as an administrative assistant to the administrator, you would also be the administrative assistant to the board.
You would be surprised at how many people think I just sit at the desk and answer the phone.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
We don't fire your man.
Let him sit next to you for a day.
I'm talking here about our duties.
Some of us know better than others.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, we, we do know.
We're the secretary, we all know that. So, yeah, so that's my understanding, I mean, that's where I'm going for that.
So, you did make a motion, are you comfortable with that motion, as you made it? Steve, you seconded that specifically? And that motion to review is that we, I guess, recommend to the Board of Commissioners that they appoint-
An administrative-
An administrative assistant for Parks and Rec Commission.
Is that a term that you want to hear?
You probably want to say hire, because appoint means something a little different.
Hire, that's fine.
Yeah.
To put hire.
See, I thought appoint was, was more flexible than hire.
Appointment, appointment is kind of like you're taking an oath of office, similar to what you did to take this board. Taking hiring.
Supply.
I'm comfortable with hire.
However, we work, they're going to do what they want, as opposed to what, how we work with anything.
Okay, okay, but I was-
Her words are exactly, that's why we need her, because the wording and things going into the right place at the right time is critical.
Yeah. So if we're comfortable with hire, then the motion is that we recommend to the full Board of Commissioners that they hire a administrative assistant to assist and direct the Parks and Rec Commission. Am I correct, we're clear on that? Steve, you're second to that, is good? Okay?
Yes, sir.
More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Okay, and it can be our understanding that we're going to continue to get help with our minutes into next year then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Then the next thing I would say, if, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, because I think we've cleared this up, okay, we should, the commission also wants us to prioritize what we want out of our, we have $45,000 capital outlay to spend for 2022, that's all that's in there, it's $45,000. So, um-
For '22.
Yes.
Who came up with that?
It's, it's honestly-
Sweet.
It's been a rolling budget, that's all we've gotten for the last several years.
That's the figure that's been in that line.
But, yeah, they said, they did give us, I just saw it, we, they just paid for all that debris cleanup at the other park, that's not coming out of our budget, I think that's,
oh, $9,800, I think.
That's this year, Melinda? That debris cleanup?
Yeah, I think $9,800 is going to come out of, yeah. They gave us basically credit for, some money's unspent in past years, which is unprecedented, gave us credit for those, those unspent dollars, put, and so basically pulled it out of the general fund and paid for cleanup at Miles Kimmerly, and we only paid the $9,800. So they did do that for us, that's some other things too, but, so I, I would look at, at this, so if we were to back up, I want, I'd like some little bit of help with this. I know we put, I don't remember what year, but we did the grub shack at Old Settlers, we've done the cleanup at Miles Kimmerly, and we did the fish walk at Veronica Valley. What other big projects have we done in the last few years?
The tennis court redo, that was-
Tennis court redo?
That was, I don't know, 20 grand-ish, wasn't it?
Okay, and that was Miles Kimmerly.
When was that, how long ago?
We did-
Five, maybe four.
We spent a lot of money on Veronica Valley for that grant with Floss.
Didn't get any place.
And didn't get any place, but we tried.
We got the planning done, and that was it, yes.
Yeah. So, so-
What was that she was talking about?
We spent a, yeah.
A fee for development of the grant applications-
Please stand up and look at it. So we've got, what we've, what we've got down is, is, these are the projects we've recognized that we want to do as soon as we prioritize. We have to refurbish the baseball and softball diamonds at Miles Kimmerly, we, that's, we approximately $10,000. We've got new pickleball courts at Miles Kimmerly, and that's $50,000. And new soccer pavilion at Miles Kimmerly, that's 10. We have that one mile loop for Miles Kimmerly, that's between the $200,000 to $400,000, which in all honesty is either going to take a gift or a grant, I, I think, for that. We have the dog park at Miles Kimmerly. Written down here is the parking lot reconstruction at Veronica Valley. I don't see, we did not get a lot of traction for that at the, at this-
Didn't what?
We did not get a lot of traction for that at the Board of Commissioners level.
It needs to get done. The entrance now has got a new culvert in there, and we got to, we now have to cement and pave that entrance, and then continue right with the parking lot.
Well, there wasn't a lot of traction at the board level, spent our money on that, so we might, you might revisit that, and maybe come back with something less than this, that would be a thought if you still want to do that. There's a fishing edge pond walkway, which we just approved, so that's going to happen. And then Old Settlers has the playground equipment and the safety barriers.
Coming back to what John was saying, if, if we have some washout and then some trouble there where the work has been done already, we want to preserve that. Maybe falling back to, since Josh is going to be out there with Elmer's doing some work, have them do a little bit of support to make sure that that doesn't wash away, is that your concern?
No, the road was getting tore up, and it was an illegal entryway, that was 100 feet wide. So we got them to say, okay, we've got to get rid of that culvert and narrow it down. And do you want to put in the entrance at this time? And the entrance was estimated to be about 15 grand to put curbs and pave it. And they said, well, let's do it all next year, because you can do the entrance and pave the lot at the same time. But if we've got to do anything, we've got to go back to putting in and approve safety entrance when this new culvert gets put in, get the sign out of the way. If that's all we want to do, is pave the entrance and leave the rest gravel and hay and stones and whatever, that's fine, but we've got to do an entrance at least next year.
What about, you weren't here for one of the meetings, there's some heavy-duty stone that maybe you're familiar with, Afton Stone? And it, it basically is, it's chopped stone that turns into concrete, you know, and the more you drive on it, the stronger it gets. And Josh?
Yeah, I'm already working with Josh on that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we're taking care of that.
Yeah, but, so can you use that as, in the entryway, as?
The entrance needs a commercial curb-
Okay.
And a, and a access to get to that curb. As you go into a commercial driveway, it's not meeting any standard and stuff, and we just got to get it to where-
So the road commission is going to make us curb it?
No, they'll apply for the permit. They're saying it doesn't meet our present standards.
I just wondered why it has to be curbed, because that's going to be a big cost to curb that.
That was 15 grand to curb it and put an entryway in there.
That's a curb and then some asphalt?
Called curb and gutter, yeah.
Curb and gutter and asphalt?
Yeah.
$15,000.
That's what I had as a quote, I'd have to go back and look at it. And we were thinking of sandwiching it right in with the parking lot, but that part's got to get done.
So to have the County Road Commission involved with doing the size of the culvert and that part of it, part of that whole thing, working with them, includes making this a curved entry?
Right, they're sizing the culvert to make the correct curb entry.
What they're, what they're telling us is this is the proper regulation to do.
Right, for that kind of traffic and for that kind of commercial entrance.
So we don't get to choose- So we don't get to choose the kind of entry we're going to do. They are telling us, you're commercial and you have to do this kind of entry.
Right, right.
I think that was Melinda's.
And the road, the road's getting tore up there.
It's not, it is a park, but it's really not commercial, so being it's a passive park. Is that mandated? Is the road commission, I mean, have them send that to us in writing that we must curb and gutter our parks?
That's your question, yeah. That, John, that's the question. Maybe you could touch base with the county road commission and see if we have to do the curves.
We have to curb it.
They look at the number of people that come in, okay, the quantity and stuff, just like you would a winery or entrance to a school or something like that. And this is a park entrance that sometimes sees hundreds of cars in one day and maybe only 30 another day.
Maybe you could touch base with them and see if it's mandated.
That's all we need to know.
That's, that's what, just ask that question.
Because if we have to pull 15,000 out of our budget next year for that park, that, you know, that's going to be, that's one third of our budget for next year.
And add it to it.
Capital outlay.
Add another 15 to it.
For what?
For this driveway.
No. I'm saying, you said an entrance, if we have to do it that way, it's going to be 15,000.
Yeah, John was just saying, okay, instead of it being a third of our capital outlay budget next year, increase the capital outlay budget.
I don't think we're going to get our capital outlay budget increased, I honestly don't. We can try, but we can ask the county to pay for this because this is kind of something out of our control, but.
So the vision for the, for the Board of Commissioners for the parks is totally different from many of our visions. Otherwise, they would increase the capital outlay.
The Board of Commissioners, I looks at, our budget has gone up, it's suddenly increased over the years. There was opposition to us even getting Veronica Valley, but we did get the park and it was supposed to have been a passive park. And some have said it wasn't supposed to cost us anything, it was supposed to remain a passive wildlife park. And so every time a big expense like this comes up for our park, it's, it's not with resistance. So.
No, my feeling about that, Melinda, is that we're tasked with communicating to the Board of Commissioners what the parks need. Granted, perhaps that communication upward needs to be improved and structured somewhat differently. But I, I, I get the feeling and the communication back from the county Board of Commissioners that we're spending too much money and that it's our job to spend as little of the county's money as possible. And I, I.
Well.
I really don't see that as being our job whatsoever. I mean, I haven't conducted myself with any concern about the cost to the county. I'm trying to recommend to those who, who have to be, who are responsible for costs and expenditures, what it is the parks need. And.
Understood, but it, there's, there's only so much money. There's, there's only so much money. We've got a lot of really big items, and this is our, this is our budget for 2022 right here.
Well, I can, I can well imagine.
And we've got the sheriff that, that needs and wants a vote, we've got.
Well, sure.
New employees coming on, we've got.
But again, that isn't, and shouldn't be, I don't believe, part of our concern at all. Now, I understand that we may put out a wish list this long prioritized, detailed, absolutely perfect. And the county commission may say, no, you're only going to get this much, and I accept that.
Okay.
But I don't see, I, it's difficult to work under the feeling that we are doing too much. I mean, we're spending too, we're having too many meetings, that, that rankles me severely. Because that really feels like I'm being told, oh, you're working too hard and spending too much money. And that, as a volunteer, that's a real kick in the gut.
Well, you know.
I can, I could perfectly well accept that the county Board of Commissioners comes back to us and says, you don't get a dime more. You get 45,000 in capital expenditure next year and year after year. I, that I can accept because that's their decision. But these other communications that we're somehow doing too much and costing too much money is difficult. It's really difficult.
That is, that's my interpretation of what I'm hearing.
So, that is?
That, that, I'm just telling you that what.
But that is what you're, what you're hearing from the full commission is?
I'm the messenger.
I'm the messenger, thank you. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm hearing. And I will say it's better than it was a couple of years ago.
But we have two commissioners, board commissioners on the Parks and Rec Commission, and you should, and I think you are probably, be the spokesman for the, for this group. And say, what, what are the two of you, Rick and you, what is your vision? We should tell the Parks and Rec, what's your vision that you're going to take forward to the Board of Commissioners? And how this stuff should be, the park's key. But I mean, what, what, don't you want to walk into a park and say, wow, this is, really looks nice? I don't have that feeling. I mean, Parks, Miles Kimmerly are fine, the soccer field is in super shape, it's, it's a beauty to behold. But there's, there are parks in the park that are a little shabby, they, they start with the paint, but it's more than that. They don't even have a drinking fountain there. You have to go there and have to push a thing down and out of a pipe that comes up to fill your cup with water. I mean, you know, we should have a little nicer quality stuff. We're in the country, we're a foreign country, we are, but I think we deserve, our parks, county parks deserve a little more than they have. They really do. And the only way we're going to get that and do some of the projects that people want is for the budget to be increased.
I guess, I want to give a little too sense here, and it's just a little bit of redundancy. And that is that the thing that bothers me most, I understand the financial constraints, okay, and, and a budget. The only thing that rankles me is the first thing that Dave mentioned, that we need to cut back on our committee meetings because the $1,000 increase or 2,000, whatever it may be, is, is, the committees looking at that and finds that negative. I, I think, as you mentioned, it's really a volunteer situation. You know, we drive to the parks on our own and, and look at things to see how we can improve, talk to Scott. And, and we get together on our own. And so we're not looking, it's, it's, much of it is a volunteer situation. So it, I'll have to say it is not well received to hear that we have too many, we're spending too much, this thousand dollars plus is too much for the board to handle. I, I find that surprising.
And maybe we are having too many meetings if we don't have the resources to do the things we want to do that we decide in the meeting. We pull it forward and we hit a wall.
I don't think we're having too many meetings, we're finally getting something done.
I don't either, but I'm saying maybe we are, if the resources aren't there to follow through with what we recommend.
And this big wave of projects now is coming forward. And it's because that we're looking at all this stuff. And it's because that there's been this bad walkway around the thing where kids have fallen in. And it's because there's a horrible entry.
Melinda, do we need to prioritize at this meeting at this point in time or can we do that?
I wanted to move on to that next stuff.
I was angling towards that.
So this would be, this is an important time to do a prioritization or can we do that at the next meeting? I'm just kind of glancing at the time. Do we need to concentrate on that, is my question?
I just realized I should be taking some minutes. So let me make this very clear, I'll take back to them that we are very upset with being told we are having too many meetings, correct? I will take that back to them. We'll take back to them.
It's not, it's not the too many meetings, it's the financial burden of a thousand dollars or so.
I did, I thought I made it very clear that it was more than just the financial burden. Thank you, Laurel. What am I missing, do I kick back to them?
Well, one of the things that is being continually discussed is funding. And I'm wondering, I know they're still in the final phases of what's going to be eligible for ARP funding. I'm wondering if we just find out when it's finally settled if that's something that some of these projects might be eligible for. You never know until you look. And if that's the case, you know, we're going to be getting 4.2 million, I know a lot of people have good ideas for that stuff. Plus, there's some additional funding coming down the pike, so it doesn't hurt to ask to see if maybe some of these might be grant funded through that.
I like to ask. I always like to load it up and ask.
I know that the board had an August 13 deadline. However, you are an internal committee and since they haven't released all the rules on what's going to be eligible or not, it might not be a bad idea to just see if some of these align with what's allowable for expenditures.
How do we do that? Does Melinda carry that forward to the board? Do we have to fill out something?
Well, at this point, they're still finalizing the rules on what is allowable for reimbursement.
Well, but at this point, are we not really faced, Melinda, you need a prioritize, a prioritized list, correct?
I was asked to bring them a prioritized list.
That makes sense.
By, yeah, and that makes sense regardless of whether anything comes in here. And you need this by now.
In a front row order, we have to have that list in front of us in front of the side, we should look at it.
The next budget session is the 31st.
If we could do it by email.
Um, do you want to make copies of this? I was just going off.
Can you take it to Michelle's office?
I can take it.
I was just going off of that.
Copy.
See, in regards to Miles Kimmerly, the list that we have, you listed things that I wasn't totally aware of. I didn't know what it was, a soccer or something?
I didn't know what that was either, it's a soccer grub shack?
The pavilion that we talked about.
Oh, that's a soccer grub shack.
Well, if we aren't going to determine a priority list right now, the next day, the drop deadline is the 31st. I mean, that's the next budget meeting?
Well, you certainly want to have it well in advance so that they have a chance to review.
Well, I understand that, I understand it has to be in advance of that, but not necessarily tonight.
Right.
So.
Maybe by next Thursday?
Yeah, 31st is our next.
So, I would suggest that we have the three park committee chair, I guess, and Steve, I don't know, and perhaps Scott involved in, in that priority list. I'm looking for suggestions here. Either that or we sit here now and try to come up with a priority list. I don't think we came, any of us came prepared exactly.
Can we get together without, and do that without calling it a meeting?
No.
You got one coming up on Friday?
We do, yeah.
One park does.
Miles Kimmerly, yeah, join us, come back here and finish the thing, yeah. We have a meeting set up for Friday that starts at Miles Kimmerly to review.
But isn't that the 26th and so that would be before the 31st?
We could change it to the committee.
So are you talking about the entire board coming to your meeting and discussing either your meeting and then?
No, just we invite Dave and we invite you and.
What you could do is, I'll send out an email with a list and everyone decide how you want to prioritize, one through whatever. And then send me back your responses and then I'll tally the results and send them back to everyone.
Sure, that's fine.
You know?
But the list has to be inclusive of all the things that.
Yes.
Each of us would like done.
Right.
But Steve is suggesting we really need to, those of us who are here right now, really need to get this, at least a meaningful. Melinda, correct me on that. What you really need is a, we need to get this priority list for budget year 2022, not through five years.
Look at capital outlay. What do we want to spend capital outlay on?
For 2022, but not five years in advance, just through the one budget year.
That's right.
Okay.
And that's why I'm saying Old Settlers Park is kind of where I was going for, I think, is pretty much down around the rotation for '22. And the playground equipment and barriers is probably going to be 35,000. If you're saying you need 15,000 for an entrance at Veronica Valley, 15,000, we're already over our capital outlay. So it shouldn't be, shouldn't, this shouldn't take too long.
Right, I think, I think the prioritization, you know, obviously the things on the list are, are, are going to go over our capital outlay. So be careful with, one thing I wanted to mention too, that as we look at what happens in the parks year to year, at Veronica, we do a really good job with Kids Fish Day and the fish plantings. And we've got wonderful trails and we've got some very, very good native fields coming along. And now we've got a nice project coming also. So, you know, on a yearly basis, we do a pretty good job money wise there. At Miles, we do, on a yearly basis, a pretty good job money wise with regard to the soccer fields. It's a gym, it's a, college, college kids, college teams play on that field. So I mean, if you look at how we do year to year money wise, those two parks are getting a chunk year to year. So, you know, the, the new playground equipment, rotation back to Old Settlers is not such a bad idea. I don't think that, in my mind, could be number one easily.
Playground equipment at Old Settlers?
I'm sorry, Old Settlers.
That's been needed for a long time, right?
It has, and.
And Melissa, that one quote, when they did it up at Northport, you're saying it's going to be more than 20?
I get that true.
Well, they just did one at Cedar, Cedar just did a beautiful playground down there. And I think one, the one main piece structure was 20,000 for the one.
And Bingham did one too, I think, didn't they? So you're saying 20 isn't enough?
I don't, I don't think so. I think the park will do whatever they can with the amount.
Barriers are more important than replacing the equipment, so that should definitely be on.
Well, actually.
Well, depending where you put the.
We've taken equipment out.
The equipment, you may not need the barriers.
Well, we'd have to move that swing set that's there.
That needs to go anyways.
This is the first time I heard about barriers, I guess.
Well, it's, it's going to be an insurance liability.
But if we want to put some money in the budget for that, we can meet as a committee with Scott and, and look at where we would put that new piece and whether we take the swing set out and use that. And that's a good point, if we wanted to get rid of that old swing set, so, okay.
So like Steve said.
So are we, are we then looking at putting a dollar figure for that playground equipment at 30,000?
Yeah, I would, you could probably give, yeah, I would say so.
I think that'd be prudent, I don't know what we could get for 20. I think 30 gets us.
You wouldn't get anything for 20.
30 gets us a little closer.
So is our goal here to stay under 45?
We're prioritizing.
I think we should just say what we need.
It's prioritize.
Yeah, what's number one, number two, but let's not waste our time going beyond, too much beyond 45,000.
Why, why not prioritize?
Well, and I'm going to.
No, I think we have to prioritize, but I'm trying to, Don asked the question, are we trying to stay with 45,000? And I think we have to for what is being.
If I do that, I'll, I'll, it's all great, it's totally different than if I.
Well. If we, I would prioritize, what would be the next thing? If we had, let's look at it more like if we had the money. If it was unlimited, what would our, what would, I wouldn't do that.
What about a pavilion at Miles?
So that gets back to Don.
Reasonably, what would be the next thing we want to do?
What's the next thing that you think should be done? I guess is how we should prioritize, right, Melinda? I mean.
Yeah.
Don't look at the numbers because.
A pavilion?
We're going to, we're going to lose.
You got that answer.
We're only going to fit one thing in, maybe two, so don't worry about the numbers. Just which ones do you think should happen first, second, third, fourth, fifth? That gives us a priority.
Do you think an entryway should be before the pavilion?
Well, you're going to.
Yeah, that's a good question, and you answer it and we all will too. Everybody, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
I can get you a letter and stuff, but the present entry is, is unsafe. The battle goes on the road and is tearing up the highway and it needs to be curbed for the safety standards.
You're going to find that out for us, but I would, we should do the entryway if you're going to put that. You're going to find that out for us, but I would... so we should do the entryway if you're going to put that... Have they already put the-
I think from Veronica Valley Committee, sitting right here, that that entryway for that 2022 budget would be number one.
The fishing pond walkway is already a done deal.
It is.
So, but that is number one since it's already being done.
Yeah, we're going to have to lay something here for a while.
Well, it's not even that much. It's twenty-three, five.
Because that's coming out of 2021.
Right.
That'll be done this year.
Oh, that's 2022.
This is for 2020.
That's not needed now there. Should we cross that out?
You can cross that out.
The edge, the fishing pond's edge?
Cross out the fishing pond.
Fishing pond edge, okay.
Cross out that parking lot reconstruction and just put entryway.
I did that, yeah. I'm calling that one an entrance because of our discussion.
And you said fifteen thousand?
But now the next question-
Yes, if you're just doing an entrance.
Then the next question is if we're going to remove that building at Miles Kimerly, you guys need a little shack there.
That's next on the agenda.
Right. Will that be done in this year yet?
We're hoping.
Okay, so it'll come out of 2021?
Well, that's a good point. Yeah, we don't have to, well-
Don't have to worry about that?
That's an empty thing. That's tough call, John, but that, I'll talk about it.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I don't know what to do with that.
So what is the idea with the soccer pavilion at Miles Kimerly?
What is that soccer? Scott left... I think-
He'll be right back.
I think the soccer pavilion means what's going to replace the grub shack that's gone, I guess. I don't know. That's new to me. I don't have anything about a new soccer pavilion.
Oh, that must be the replacement.
That's a replacement. Okay.
I'd like to see that as number three.
So unless it comes out of 21, John?
Unless it comes out of what?
Twenty-one. They're going to try to do this year.
We've only got roughly fifteen.
It's going to be a stretch. Do you think we can get that grub shack replacement done this year, Scott?
The pavilion?
Miles Kimerly.
Pull the water and-
Can we get it done?
Yeah.
I doubt it.
Is it done this year? No.
It's going to roll into the 2022 budget?
It takes ninety days to go out and get something there and bring it back.
Yeah, I don't see this. So leave it out.
But how much you think it's going to cost, Scott? It says ten grand. Is that just like a pavilion with posts and a roof on it now?
Is this a wellhouse?
John's wrote, did some design sketches.
Probably going to be more, John. We don't have a cost estimate. It's going to be more than John. Well, if you're going to do an enclosed storage area for soccer, it's going to be just this to include it on that.
I mean, to move that grub shack out of there, that can go, but all the-
All the electrical?
All the rest of it, what do we do? Just leave it laying out in the field?
That's coming up.
That's what worries me. I mean, that's great. The guy wants the shack. He's going to take it for a buck. But now we got-
He can't take it till he takes-
These panels waving in the wind and water tanks and-
You have a surge tank there too.
There's a lot of moving pieces to this.
Hey, Scott, you got the surge tank.
Should we put that in front of the playground equipment?
It seems like it ought to be first or second, the grub shack.
Yeah, it'll be on next year.
Well, but my question is, if you're pulling that shack this year, what are you going to cover that stuff up with this year?
We're going to show you. That's what this handout is all about.
I don't know. I don't know what's going on.
Temporarily? Well, what do we have?
I'm concerned with what's going on.
Well, can you... Can't you buy those little pre-made buildings and stick it in one of those?
You could, temporarily permanent.
Yeah.
If it's under a hundred square feet, you can put it in. Those little sheds that I think Melinda's talking about are eight by twelve.
You can't just leave the electrical unattended.
There are, just a suggestion, there are people out there that are building these sheds. If instead of buying a shed, you just go to one of these guys, there's a guy right there on Alpine Road, and, or maybe it's Cedar Road, whatever it's called, and he's building them. And so Scott, the group could say, okay, since this is the direction that is going, building's going to be gone, we need to have another building built. And these buildings are going for about ten grand, okay? And then you could design it less than ten by ten, and he could build according to our design. And they're not terribly expensive, so, just a thought.
Right on the curve by the cemetery?
Yes.
Well, because I was just... this is through July thirty-first. We still have all of our capital outlay line item except that we've just spent-
Twenty-three, five on that. The safety walkway at Veronica.
And ten, so twenty-three, five, thirty-three. We've got about ten thousand left in this year's budget if we did that this year.
Sure would be great, because, you know, he's exactly right.
I am.
I ran some numbers, just I went to Menards and you can estimate a building. So I estimated a pole barn with minimal windows, a couple doors. And it was five grand for the material for that size building that's there now. Just proof of thought.
Well, I know we're-
It's probably gone up since then because of the spring.
Yeah, I know we're overlapping here a little bit, but... Sounds to me like that should be done this year, this fall.
If we can get it, we have to go through a lot of hoops, but I think we can do it.
Well-
We have enough meetings.
The only big hoop I see is...
Sorry, I lost.
But, Don, the only big hoop I see is if you get involved in a contract, you've got to push it through the full commission. Otherwise, some of this is-
Sometimes you can be done with an emergency if you go through chat. Chat may authorize it, as we've got to get this electrical covered up. Boom. It's a possibility. I knew we talked to Chad about that, but-
We call electrician, we get a pole, we can take care of that. Whether we can move it or twist it during this time, no. But we can get the shed out of there, get the pole up temporarily, and we can turn off the water source and move the pressure tank over. We can... and if we get things done after that, we cover that up first. We don't have to. We could get going on it. If we don't have to take out a lot of bids, if we delete a bid, we can put down a concrete slab the same size as the lot, this thing that was there for... I calculated it out for five thousand dollars, I guess.
Well, again, in terms of getting it done this year, we have to-
We have to move.
Don, well, Don, you've got to keep in mind the process, so yes, all the steps.
So I think in the priority, if we put the new soccer pavilion number one, and if it happens in this year, number two becomes number one. Number-
Oh, that's true.
Three becomes number two. So let's stick with that as number one. You know, we've got two and three. We've got a playground equipment and we've got an entrance. You know, those are up in that category, don't you think? Then we get into four, five, six, and seven, and, you know, I think, I don't know what we can do. We can hand all of our papers to Laurel and she'll tabulate. Does that sound good?
I would like to see us put... I'd like to see us move towards that dog park. There's a lot of interest in that dog park, even if we don't have forty thousand left in our budget next year. Maybe we could begin it, start it, or excavate it, or whatever.
Just for a throw, I think it was Scott or somebody was doing a little bit of checking around, and pickleball, there was a great interest in the pickleball.
Pickleball's huge. I get people ask me that all the time.
More than the dog park?
More than the dog park.
No one talks about a dog.
Oh, really?
I was just trying to... if everybody puts their numbers down and hands them to Laurel and she can tabulate, then we'll have a priority for Melinda. Otherwise, it's going to be kind of hard to get there. I'm just looking at the time. I'd like to get there.
Let me just comment on the paved trail. I got to apply for a federal state grant for this two-hundred thousand dollar, four-hundred thousand dollar trail. And I... the bids don't open up until... you can't apply until January first of '22. And the deadline is April of '22, and they look at the bids in October, November, and they notify you then. So it's not for '23. So we could take it off the list, even, or put it last, because it's for '23. And I'll be wanting to ask for fifty percent of the value of the project if we get the grant.
That was a one-mile paved loop?
Yes.
Well, keep in mind that the board has to approve any grant applications.
Oh, but I can start it.
You can start it, but the critical thing is that they have to-
I have to get another approval. I mean, I know that.
Well, and they have to approve the match. I mean, if it's a grant with a match, the critical step that I've gone through is the Board of Commissioners has to approve the match that you're putting into your application before you apply.
Hold on a second. I'll talk about that later.
Okay, okay. Scott?
The baseball diamonds, scratch that off the list. It's already been done.
Already been done?
Great.
They're talking about getting rid of some of the baseball diamond or something like that. We'll talk about that in our committee meeting later.
Don't they want better dugouts, or did we replace the dugouts?
Pardon me?
The dugouts? Did we do anything with the dugouts?
No, they need to be painted, but they're in good shape.
Do you need a name on that?
It's not understanding that you can... we can come and help you paint and just volunteer without having to go through any hoopla, can't we?
Yeah, I got a brush, it'll take your hand this time.
That's what I thought, so I can come and paint and... No, really, volunteering is okay that way.
There's a whole risk management thing on volunteers, and I think there is capability-
You just can't run any equipment.
Yeah, but we can come around a paintbrush.
Chad has a total handle on it.
Not climb a ladder.
There's a lot that can be done with volunteers.
Okay.
What are you looking for?
Your list.
Sort of, but are we going to get that pavilion done this year or not? Because chat can approve up to so much.
That's going to come out in the wash.
We're going to work on it hard, put it as we wanted it to be.
Here, the couple.
Melinda?
Yes.
It would be nice if the board could come up with a Parks and Rec Committee SOP and Parks and Rec Committee goals. Okay, that would be helpful out of soccer pavilion. Those two things, and then if they can work it out, Parks and Rec Subcommittee SOP and Parks and Rec Subcommittee goal. Standard operating procedure. You know, because we're new, we don't really know what I'm shooting in the dark about everything. And it'd be helpful.
These will not get chatted until I get back from the meeting.
They said fifty, but I didn't think it was going to take that much. You think it can be done by ten? Oh, I put the wrong number there. Yeah, ten. Pavilion at Miles, ten.
That's my recommendation.
Okay.
Melinda, have we gotten close to what you need?
I think so. I think we're... yeah, she's going to tabulate. We're good, so.
Okay, we've got... On our agenda, we've got item three done. We're then at item four, committee reports and recommendations. I feel like we've gone through a lot of it already.
Miles Kimerly, I'll be real quick. A lot cleaned up's been done, it's been done well, I would say. And I'll look at the shack removal. I mean, not last week, our committee did, and we need the full Park and Rec Commission to recommend to the Board of Governors that we have the shack removed by... Do I say the guy's name? Tim Newman?
Well, it's Casson Contracting Incorporated.
You know what it is. Okay, I'll board it that way. To have him remove it, and we will... we pay him one dollar to have it removed.
He pays us a dollar.
Depending on us taking care of the electrical and the water, disconnecting those from the building before he can.
So is this work that... I'm not hearing dollars involved. Is this work that you, as committee chairman and Scott can?
Yeah, and Brett Robbins knows this dollar.
Okay.
He's going to take the building away.
But we can push this work along, whatever it is, without moving on through the process of recommendations to the full commission, et cetera?
I think they'll have to recommend... this committee, this commission has to recommend it to the Board of Governors.
You can make a recommendation to the county.
Okay, and then, but then how... who is going to be disconnecting the volume bottle, the extra bottle, and the electrical system?
We have to have that done.
I was under the impression this gentleman does this stuff all the time, and he can do it.
Okay, so he can disconnect all that and leave the bottle sitting off to the side and the piping sitting off to the side. Is that correct, Scott? Is that what he said?
I haven't talked to him. I don't know why.
Because that's got to be clarified.
But we have to get an electrician.
We can't just leave you hanging with inoperable situation.
Well, this is some that Don will be responsible at his committee for working out. I just want to make sure that if there's something that this commission needs to recommend onto the full Board of Commissioners, we need to do the... you need to make the motion.
I make the motion.
The correct motion, so that we can do that, so that it can get onto the full commission.
I'm making a recommendation to the Parks and Rec Commission. You want to interrupt?
No, keep talking.
Oh.
We'll discuss it after you give the motion.
That the Park and Rec Commission recommend to the Board of Commissioners that we have the grub shack removed at a cost of one dollar to us by Mr. Tim Newman.
Casson Contracting Incorporated.
Okay, you know what?
Pending council.
Pending approval.
Corporate council.
The disconnection of the electrical and the water source from that building.
And corporate council.
And pending approval by corporate council.
Oh, okay.
I support.
You do support?
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Laurel, if we're not spending a fantastic amount of money like owing a dollar, does it have to go in front of the board?
It's an agreement or a contract. Board requires approval.
So-
Those words say though, if it's an agreement with an individual and doesn't exceed whatever that is, it's paragraph three.
The board has to approve.
If it doesn't exceed, whether it's an improvement or a contract with a person, if it doesn't exceed so much, it doesn't have to go in front of the board.
The board has budget rules.
And that, it's number three in the budget rules, and I don't have it in front of you.
Well-
And it does say individual.
Well, again, I would write deferred to chat on that.
There are members of courtesy if something else.
He can't be there doing shit without-
Right, Melinda?
I would kind of think that because we're removing a building, it kind of better be permitted. I don't have them with me. I just have the budget.
It's got to go through.
It's costing us a dollar.
Okay, so we have this motion out of the table. Is that John's?
What I don't understand is, Scott, when you take the grub shack down, what happens to all the soccer equipment that's in it?
This is soccer league?
It's soccer league. Some of the stuffs in there is ours.
Isn't there a true soccer league?
It's a small shed that I told them they could use, it's not being utilized.
Okay, because when I was there, there was a bunch of stuff in it, and they'd tear the building down.
They're not going to be very happy, but they've known it's coming for the last sixteen years, so.
That's why... I don't understand, just the object is just to tear the building down and have it turned out? Okay, the second one is what happens to the surge tank?
Well, a short-term solution might be to use the shack that they have, that one that's designated to them, put in the overflow in the maintenance building temporarily. And then maybe part of the plan we're going... John's going to present in a minute. Might solve the solution.
This is precisely the kind of detail and discussion that I think our committee system helps with.
Right.
That is, I don't know that we all need the answer to that question right now. Certainly, your committee has to figure that out.
The hard part was that I was involved in it, so I would have the question, and the surge tank is there, so you're not going to have water. That's the potable water. And you've got kids playing soccer that are going to want to drink. And so, no, because the very fact that we're taking the shed down, then, you know, that's why I'm opposed, strongly opposed, to taking the shed down so you eliminate the potable water source. Unless you put something... Something... and the other thing is, then the electrical is just standing out there, free standing out in the open.
My recommendation is pending taking care of the electrical and the water source.
Well, how do you... what are you saying? That's not enough. You have to come up with a solution to take... where you're going to put the surge tank.
Well, the electrical's going to be placed temporarily till we build something for it, and that can be outdoors. It doesn't have to be indoors.
Don, can you speak into a microphone as well?
That can be outdoors. It doesn't have to be indoors. That can be outdoors, it doesn't have to be indoors. That's number one. Number two, the water thing, it's all just drinking water. The soccer field irrigation system is a totally separate system, so that's not a problem. But the, the drinking water will be turned off until we actually take the pressure tank, and it has to be relocated. Maybe it could just be set off to the side and some plumber come out and rehook it up.
So, is this going to stand out there?
Maybe a temporary hookup, sure, maybe a temporary hookup till we get the building built and put it back in the building.
So, the solution is to have the surge tank be outside?
Temporarily, it would be, yeah.
What does temporarily mean?
Well, until we get the building built, that's what I say, we got to move on it and get it done, yeah.
Well, my question is, the speed of this is that it'll be two years before the building is built.
Oh, I can't believe that. Well, we can, like somebody said, you can go out and buy a temporary small little structure or something, just set over that pressure tank. That's not a problem.
I think that's going to be part of the solution, and the, and, um, you know, what you're doing here should be part of the statement. Otherwise, it's a kind of a blank statement, you're just taking it away. You haven't provided a solution to the electrical is freestanding or the surge tank.
Well, to, for us to do that, we need an electrician to come out and look at it and tell us how, how, what he would recommend. That's what I would propose, number one. Number two, is to have the plumber come out and see what he would recommend and propose. I can envision, I've done some plumbing, electrical work myself, and I can envision that that is not that difficult a thing to do. Be a temporary hookup for both, you put the building structure that you want up, and then you're back in.
Could that be included in the motion? That if this is going to happen through the administrator, county administrator, that all of the electrical and plumbing issues will need to be addressed and solved at the same time?
Yes, prior to the demolition.
Sure.
It, they don't have to sort it, it'll be prior, during, and at the same time. If, they're going to have to, they'll have to figure it, if we put it in the motion, then we're alerting them that all of this has to happen at the same time. And if it has to happen before the building's actually moved, they have to figure it out. But let's put it in our motion. If they want, if this is going to happen this way under the administrator's eye, and, and he's going to be able to actually make it happen, let's make sure that he knows that the plumbing and the electrical issues have to be addressed and solved at the same time.
Well...
Can't that be in the same motion?
I would think so, that's a good way to put it.
Is it in there?
It says pending disconnect of water and electrical.
Well, we don't want it disconnected, we want it solved.
Pending...
Pending, um...
Resolve of the water and electrical.
Resolution of the electric and water issues.
Saying a pending resolution of the electric and water.
Turning, turning off the water, yeah, that can be done, but I don't...
The repositioning of the electric and the water.
Can that be in the same motion?
Yeah.
Sure.
Read the motion.
The, the most important thing is we have a clear understanding, all of us, of the motion, yes.
Says motion by the Parks and Rec Commission to the Board of Commissioners that we have the grub shack removed at the cost of one dollar by Casson.
Casson.
Pending resolution of the water and electrical utilities and council.
Pending council review and approval.
And change the word pending to...
Resolve.
Resolve, or...
He said pending resolve.
Repositioning, repositioning.
Pending resolution?
That's what it is.
Pending resolution.
No. Resolution is a strange word.
Yes.
It doesn't carry a lot of weight.
About repositioning.
Repositioning the electrical? I don't think you're going to reposition the electrical.
Well, you're going to reposition the electrical and the water, you're going to move it, you're going to turn it, we're going to push it aside, we're going to do something. It's going to be temporarily put someplace for him to get the pot, the structure out of there.
I don't, I don't think you're going to temporarily move, Scott, are they going to temporarily move the electrical?
We were talking about just supporting the box on four-by-fours.
Yeah, okay, well...
Well, that's, that's moving, and you're taking it off the wall of the building.
So, you're not, John, you're not comfortable with the, the phrase in the, in the motion simply resolution? I'm suggesting, and we are in discussion of this motion at this moment, so I'm suggesting that's that committee's job. I think, I think they're understanding where we're at. And I think it's their job to figure out that repositioning, re, re, resolution.
There could be a better word, there's no question about it.
But that's up to you to figure out, we're trying to pass on a res, a recommendation to the full Board of Commissioners.
Do we get to see what the resolution is prior to their doing it?
Well, we, we just read it.
Well, no, I mean, I get to see the physical resolution before they tear down the shed.
Well, that's a, that's a given, because we're going to have some electrical person or the person that does that has an electrical person.
I, I, again, I would say that starts with that committee.
Here's the resolution right here.
Yeah.
We had an architect draw it up, so...
This is true. Well, not on disconnecting, reconnecting, that.
No, but it's...
We need to keep...
Somebody from our committee has to meet with the fellow that's going to take it away.
We need to work towards, not just having stuff hang out.
Done.
Okay, so I, I'm hearing that there's a clear understanding of the details of what has to be done with that, that motion.
I think we've got it.
But the motion needs to move on to the full Board of Commissioners. So, more dis, final discussion, John?
Well, his motion didn't say to take it to the Board of Commissioners. I don't think this has to go to the Board of Commissioners. All we got to do is approve that and work it out through CHET to stay under the five grand and stuff. You don't have to go to the Board of Commissioners.
I think because we're, I think it's safe to take it to the Board of Commissioners because of the contract.
Well, that, we're giving away county assets, you're, you're pulling a building out of the park. I think the county commissioners really need to know that.
Well, they're not going to say no.
I mean, well, whatever happened to that building, we just gave away.
This is a, this, something's happening that is not following normal procedure. So, being that it's not following a normal procedure, I'm real confident the county Board of Commissioners need a recommendation from this group.
Yes, I agree.
Then the motion has to say to pass it on to the...
Recommend.
We did.
We just did.
It is just...
We're recommending it to the board. Yes.
And that, for my clarity, that's going to go on to the September meeting of the Board of Commissioners?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
We'll, that'll end our time and take care of it.
Further, further discussion? And everyone's clear on the motion? Don't need it reread?
It would, it would be nice to reread it one more time, I think.
Thank you.
We could appreciate that.
Motion by...
Can you speak in your speaker?
Yeah, nice and loudly.
Sorry, I didn't want my talking to come up. Says a recommendation by the Parks and Rec Commission to the Board of Commissioners that we have the grub shack removed at the cost of one dollar by Casson pending resolution of water and electrical utilities and council review and approval.
All clear? Okay, all in favor of that resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Yes, I'm opposed to it because the resolution of the electrical and the plumbing is not defined. We're not doing it, we're leaving it up in the air. Anyway, that's my feeling.
We make sure that's taken care of before the building is moved.
Well...
Yeah, it's preliminary, we, I can't put it today.
Point of order, we're not going to have to discuss it at this point.
Shouldn't we decide, if Don wants to get to how it's going to be resolved, shouldn't it come back to this committee to see if that's acceptable?
Well, but the vote was on a specific step of recommending to the full Board of Commissioners that we proceed. We still have room to detail what goes on further. Besides, point of order, we voted on the commission, so it, on the recommendation, so it passed one, two, three, four, five, six, six to one, okay.
Would it be better for your comfort level if you were to draft somewhat of a scope of service to send to council? On what you're expecting this company to do?
I, you know, honestly, I think that kind of falls in with maintenance. So, I think that Scott's going to be there when they move the building, and they have to do it, he's licensed, it has to be done by code. I think, I think this is where there's maintenance to handle.
If you wanted to go to option one, which is a four-by-six little box that fits in with the electricals on the inside, and it has a three-foot clearance, because that's the code requirement in front of, in front of the electrical, and you want to put the surge tank in it and a door on it, that's, that's a solution. But right now, we don't have a solution.
Well, but I...
We'll leave it up to Scott.
I, I don't think we were voting, needed to vote on the specifics of the solution, because it's a recommendation that we proceed to the full Board of Commissioners, so we can keep moving on it.
Wow, that took a while.
Okay.
Now... Yes. So, Miles Camerly, you have more?
One more, yeah, I apologize. One more item on, on Miles Camerly, and that's what, what are we going to do to replace the area of the grub shack that's being removed? With that electrical there, it's freestanding, that, that pressure tank there, the water is there, the water source is there, it's just there. And Scott, John, and I were out there on Monday and reviewed things, and John's come up with an excellent report that you'll go through quickly for us.
Well, we put it on our priority list, we'll do something about that.
Did everybody, everybody get a copy of this?
Yeah, but what is it you're looking, because again, I'm sensitive to the time here. What is it you're looking for us to do today by going through this? Because I still see some of this as falling back on the committee structure.
I see what you mean, yeah, yeah, as far as for us to decide what to do. Well, it sounds some of the questions that John had, but what surprises me, how to take care of the soccer thing, there's different options to do, but for this...
That's all going to come up when we build this new pavilion.
It'll come up for the building, I guess we can wait until next meeting, because we're not going to get the, you know, it's, he's got to prove funds for it. But we can wait a month.
Okay.
We can wait a month.
I, Scott and I didn't come back with a recommendation by then because the building's going to be done, and he's going to say, look what I lined up, if you guys approve this.
Melinda, do you have anything from Old Settlers?
No. But thank you for the consideration of, of playground equipment. I was anxious to see what Laurel's tabulating for, so what we can do.
The one thing I'll report from Veronica Valley is that upon a second visit from the weed management people, Seven Lake Services, it was determined that again, we did not need to spray this year, which means we're probably going to recover or not spend two thousand dollars on weed control this year. The weed situations look fine. Scott and I have been talking about, I will now proceed to purchase two tools to be used for weed management by, the expectation is volunteer group from the Kids Fishing Day Committee, consisting of a cutter and a rake, so that a lot of the weeds can be managed from shore manually as opposed to chemical treatment. That's really where we stand right now, it's all looking good. There are fish visible, active in all the ponds. When I've talked with those folks fishing, they've been catching fish, they've all been happy. And there are big bass in the pond. Other than that, we did, the county Board of Commissioners did approve our moving ahead with the safety walkway around the old putting green, the main access to the fishing pond. And that work, according to Elmer's response to that RFP, is, will be done by November 1st. Public comment? I see no public, we'll move on. Any additional commissioner comment at this moment? Chairperson comments? It's been a biggie. Thank you all, thank you all.
Move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is this your copy or not?
You're welcome. So, Mr. Cat Cat, you can go paint, stop and...
I can do what?
Paint. You can go volunteer at the parks, like Scott's going to paint the shed, if you want to go paint.
I know.
You can do that. But you can't...